Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 21st.
First of all, sorry, the microphone was off. So, once again, we want to welcome everybody to the October 21st, 2025 School Board Meeting for the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. At first, I do want to apologize to our audience this evening for having a little bit too much of an excessive executive session. Unfortunately, sometimes that happens during school board meetings, but my apologies. I know that your time is very important to us, and we want to thank you for coming out this evening. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and a reminder that the agenda tonight was prepared in advance. The final agenda for tonight's meeting is subject to change at the time of the meeting, and any changes will be noted at the time they are made, and again, after the meeting on the public board minutes, which are available on the district's website. Vice President Romero.
Esta agenda fue preparada antes de la reunión de esta noche. La agenda final para la reunión de esta noche está sujeta a cambios en el momento de la reunión. Cualquier cambio se anotará en el momento en que se realice, y nuevamente después de la reunión en las actas de la junta pública que están disponibles en el sitio web del distrito.
We'd also like to remind everyone that translation and interpretation services are available during this meeting. If you need assistance, please let us know, and we will be happy to accommodate you.
Nos gustaría recordar a todos que los servicios de traducción e interpretación están disponibles durante esta reunión. Si necesita asistencia, por favor infórmenos y con gusto lo ayudaremos.
At this time, if you could please rise or remove your hats and face the flag located to your left, if you're in the audience, our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Andrew Moore, and please remain standing afterwards for a moment of silence. Mr. Rett and Pastor Williams for our moment of silence.
Yes, if we can remain standing, hats off. I want to take the time out to offer our condolences to a family, a young man who has been a part of our community for some time. His family eventually ventured up to Newburgh, and unfortunately, at the age of 13, he tragically lost his life. The young man's name is Matthew Jacob Degroot. And again, it's really a tragedy. It's really sad, so we want to offer our respect and condolences to the family. Bereavement is a really tough thing for young children. He also was part of our football teams here in the city, and you know, a lot of his teammates were at the funeral this past Saturday, as well as his classmates from Newburgh. Again, I want to take my hat off to Pastor Michael Williams, or Pastor John Williams' brother, as well as John Williams, and their send-off for the young man. It was a big turnout, and the family is very pleased. And again, sincere condolences on behalf of Middletown City School Board and the community at large. If you have a few minutes, John, you want to take the time?
This is not an easy one. Matthew was 11 years old, actually, and it's a tragedy all the way around. I am grateful for the privilege that the family afforded my brother and I to facilitate those services, and as often as this happens, it never gets any easier. A wonderful, amazing young man, a family that I have known for many, many years, longtime Middletown family, and so this affects our entire community. And so, they will be returning to Middletown, and so when this family, we're going to have to wrap our arms around them. And so, I just wanted to say that, I hope that you all will excuse me. I'm going to be leaving a little bit earlier. This, besides some other things, has really triggered me, and I'm holding back tears right now. But it's continuing to... Our children are too precious for us to lose them, and whatever we're doing, we're not doing enough, and so we've got to do more. So, let's remember them, the Degroot family, in our thoughts and our prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rett. Thank you, Pastor Williams. And now, for the mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Mr. Perino.
Thank you, President Estrada. We strive to provide fiscally sound educational opportunities and a safe environment that continuously supports our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. Roll call, Mrs. Monchery.
Dr. Jesus, Mr. Estrada.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Perino.
Here.
Mr. Tobiasin.
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Monchery. Before we get to the rest of our agenda this evening, I'd like to make an opening statement. I'm about to be 60 years old in about two months, and please bear with me, because I typically don't write things down, because I like to speak from the heart, and that's what I'd like to do tonight as well. Not one day of those 60 years has gone by without me having successes and me making mistakes. Two weeks ago, when I addressed the public and the Board of Education, I talked about having gone out to meet with some of our administrators in the school district. And although there was no mal-intent in doing so, as my efforts were trying to get some information for our Board of Education, I did not ask permission from the Board of Education to meet with those administrators. And for somebody who's continually telling our board that we need to work together as a team, I neglected to do that with this team. Because of that, there has to be accountability. We teach our young people, including our student board members to my right, that when you make a mistake, you need to be held accountable for those mistakes. I want to open up by personally apologizing to Trustee Moore, Trustee Perino, Trustee Rett, Trustee Tobiasin, Trustee DeJesus, Trustee Freddie Williams, Trustee John Williams, Trustee Vice President Romero, our Superintendent of Schools, and our community for not having acted within the authority of the Board of Education. When that happens, again, you are held accountable for it, and I will accept whatever punishment comes my way, deservedly so. If that includes stepping down as President of the Board of Education, I will do that wholeheartedly, because at the end of the day, it's not this, you know? Still being on the board and contributing is just as important. So, that may happen. We're working towards that goal, and I will feel perfectly comfortable with Vice President Romero as our new president, and whomever takes on the role as Vice President as well moving forward. But that's a lesson learned, and that's how things happen. So, I will continue to contribute for this community. I've been part of board service for 22 years, 16 of it here at Middletown, but I also want to make sure that we do the right things all the time. So, with that being said, we'll move on to the rest of our meeting. Roll call. We did roll call, so I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Williams? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for the regular meeting minutes of October 9th and October 11th, 2025. Moved by Mr. Perino, seconded. Was that Mr. Freddie Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for Administrative Personnel Memorandum 10A, number one. Moved by Mr. Tobiasin.
Second on that.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for Instructional Personnel Memorandum 10B, numbers one through 17. Moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for Non-Instructional Personnel Memorandum 10C, numbers one through eight.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tobiasin.
Second on that.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries... Did you have a question?
I just want to say, and I don't know if you want me to do it now, under item A, it was a tenure appointment, which is a career for Ms. Tagney, and I just feel that we should acknowledge that.
100%. Is she here today or no? No, she's not here? Well, God bless Ms. Tagney. Congratulations on your tenure appointment. And we will be celebrating all of our tenure appointments later in the year in June when we bring them all together, but thank you for reminding me, Ms. Tobiasin. We had a motion and a second, correct? We still need a motion for non-instructional?
No.
Or for financial? So, we completed the first one. Okay, good. So, I need approval for Financial Memorandum 11D, numbers one through nine.
So moved.
By Ms. Tobiasin.
Second.
Okay, so there is... Mine says one through nine, but it is one through five on the financial memorandum. So, there was a motion by Ms. Tobiasin. Who was the second?
Second on that.
Mr. Perino had the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval of Special Services Memorandum 9E, numbers one and two.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Moore.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Perino. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. No change orders at this time. We need approval to amend the Board of Education meeting schedule for 2025. This moves our November 6th meeting of 2025, which is our next regularly scheduled meeting, to Wednesday, November 5th, to ensure that we have a quorum for the board meeting. So, I need a motion. Moved by Mr. Rett, seconded by Mr. Moore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. I need approval for our 2025 financial statement, management letter, extra classroom audit, and our CAP, submitted by Dr. Norville Connell. Moved by Ms. Tobiasin.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Rett. Any discussion? Mr. Connell, would you like to let us know what this involves for the public's sake? Dr. Connell, my apologies.
That's okay.
Out of respect.
Absolutely. Well, I'm happy to announce that coming out of the audit, there were no corrective action plans, so that was actually great, which means that we actually have our systems in place that allows us to be transparent, but at the same time, it allows us to make sure that we're managing our funds properly. So, that was excellent thing coming out of the audit. The other thing that I must say is that even with all the... With GASPU 101 and all the different constraints, we have risen to the challenge, and we were successful in making sure that our numbers represented accurately. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Dr. Connell. Any further discussion? Did I ask for a motion? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Thank goodness for our district clerk. Move on to our spotlight on excellence, our recognition for our ELCS Student of the Month. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Perino.
Thank you. Would members of the ELCS proceed to the podium along with our honored guests, Student of the Month, and the Student of the Month, the families also? And of course, the administration for the high school.
Look at that smile.
I think we will start off with our high school administrator.
Good evening. I'd like us to give a really warm Middletown welcome to Tyena.
Hey, all right.
Tyena is our Cohort 2025 Student of the Month. She recently joined us all the way from Brooklyn, New York, my home, and is already making her mark as an older sister and new student at Middletown High School. Tyena is absolutely off to an amazing start this school year, achieving high 90s and 100s in all her classes. Tyena is genuinely smart, so bright and friendly as a student, constantly uplifting her classmates. She's now expanding her horizons by joining high school clubs, and she has her sights set on becoming a nurse practitioner after graduation. Described by others as happy, compassionate, and all-around bright, we couldn't be happier that Tyena is now a valued member of our Middletown community. Thank you.
I would like to say thank you to everybody who nominated me and spoke highly of me so that I was able to win this award. I thank you and appreciate everybody of the Middletown community. Y'all treat me with respect and love. I would also like to say thank you to my parents who support me and show me love and gratitude, and I also want to say thank you to my little brother.
Where's Mom and Dad? Raise your hands. Awesome job. Congratulations.
I'd like to thank the members of the ELCS, the pastors and all the rulers, for being here this evening. Would you like to say a word?
Just congratulations, Tyena. It's so lovely to meet you and hear about your amazing accomplishments, especially as a freshman. That's awesome. Well done.
Speaking about making a mark, our new administrator at the high school, why not? Let's introduce her and take people to board.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Newsom. I'm actually the Cohort 2025 dean. I was a teacher here for many years, and I'm excited to be part of the high school community. Thank you.
And Mrs. Newsom is also a veteran, correct?
Yes.
There you go.
So, I think now they'll have a picture of the family and everybody. Awesome job. Congratulations once again, Tyena. So, we'll move on to our public participation and an opportunity to address the Board of Education. The Board will designate a portion of its meeting agenda for public comment for a period of up to 40 minutes. Each speaker will be allowed up to four minutes, and the public is not permitted to discuss topics and/or matters involving specific individuals. Speakers must sign in prior to speaking, and speakers are not permitted to cede their time to other speakers. Vice President Romero.
La junta designara una parte de su agenda de reunión para comentarios públicos por un periodo de hasta 40 minutos. A cada persona se le permitirá hasta cuatro minutos. No se permite al público discutir temas y/o asuntos que involucren a personas específicas. Las personas deben registrarse, firmar, y firmar antes de hablar. Las personas no pueden ceder su tiempo a otras personas.
Thank you, Vice President Romero. So, if anybody would like to address the board at this time, please come on up.
Hello? Hi. Okay, I'm very nervous. Members of the board, hello. My name is Jamie Kayhan, and I've been with the district for almost 14 years. From the beginning, I told Betsy McKean that my goal was to retire from here, and that is still how I feel. I've had the chance to work with everyone in the district, administrators, principals, office managers, teachers, clerical, nurses, technology, and buildings and grounds team, and I have built strong relationships with all of them. Over the years, I have seen many changes in the district, some good, some okay, some that are not fair. I have to admit, standing here, speaking today, makes me very nervous, but I hope that by sharing my thoughts, I can inspire others to speak to. In recent years, we have faced serious issues in the district, things like bullying by administrators and directors, favoritism, and unfair treatment of dedicated employees. Many of us are scared to speak out because we fear retaliation from certain individuals. It is important that the district follows civil service laws, but I have seen the district not fully comply with the rules. I was once told, as an employee, all my questions have to go through HR, and I should not contact civil service directly. It is also disheartening to see deserving people miss out on jobs that they are more than qualified for just because someone else has a connection. I have seen unqualified individuals get hired because of who they know. Positions have been changed to accommodate them, rewritten job descriptions to fit individuals who do not meet qualifications. There are cases where the civil service test expires or are made invalid to keep certain people in jobs until they pass the test, but this is not done for everyone, just certain people. I know two people who passed a test, scored high in the top three, even got fingerprinted at the district's expense, and the employees, or the future employees, never heard from the district again. The role of a board member is to advocate for our district, but how can you do that when so many employees are afraid? I know the superintendent reports to you directly and makes recommendations on promotions and firings, but do you really know who I am, what I do for the district, or how I feel? As a district, we should work together as a team. Without the teachers, our students cannot learn. No payroll, no one gets paid, no purchasing, no supplies, furniture, or equipment. We wouldn't have HR for hiring, no health benefits or insurance, and buildings and grounds wouldn't be maintained. If you want to understand how employees truly feel, you need to create a safe place where we can speak up without fearing for our jobs. We need to know we can express our concerns without the threat of retaliation. Only then can we build a culture of honesty and improvement in our district. Thank you for listening. I'm very nervous.
Thank you. You did fine. You did fine. That's not easy. Anybody else would like to speak?
Okay, I'm going to read from prepared... Good evening, members of the Board of Education. The Board recently hired a law firm to investigate the conduct of employees and other school officers. I ask for some clarification. What is the scope of the investigation? Is it connected to individuals involved in the EEOC charge? Does it include a review of the past actions related to employee management by the two named individuals, the superintendent and the HR director? My concern is about the HR director who is currently working. She has access to all employee-related matters, including confidential information, and the ability to launch investigations. As HR director, she runs and oversees a department responsible for handling sensitive and confidential documents. However, she disclosed EEOC complainant's medical information, protected by the Americans with Disabilities Act. Her mishandling of an employee's confidential information demonstrates gross negligence. Also, her involvement in the accommodation of the EEOC complainant raises additional alarm. This situation stands in stark contrast to how other employees have been treated during their investigations. They were removed from their workplace and assigned to small partitioned areas in the board office for weeks and even months, with little privacy, leaving them exposed to colleagues and visitors. This practice may be a violation of their civil rights. This could also lead to legal action against the district. In addition, some face berating and intimidation, seemingly to pressure them into resigning. Then, severe penalties were also imposed on some of these individuals, including financial penalties, long periods of sequestering, as well as preventing them from holding previous extracurricular positions, and finally transfers to other schools in the district. What responsibility does the board hold in all of this? I've been informed that the HR director has built personal relations with some board members and the superintendent. I take no issue with that, but I wonder if they affect the objectivity required to thoroughly examine her actions. For example, the superintendent is responsible for investigating alleged employee misconduct. It seems a conflict of interest that she would be want to investigate the HR director's breach of a federal ADA disclosure law. This breach is included in a federal charge and likely manifests a lawsuit. If the superintendent is on leave, what is the rationale for the HR director not being subject to the same protocols? Also, letters from the board were sent to the board... Letters from employees were sent to the board. These letters detail experiences and the effect that the current environment had on them. Unfortunately, they can't be read publicly since they were sent anonymously. Please ask yourselves, why would they want to share and not identify themselves? The answer is, there is a paralyzing fear of retaliation for speaking up. This sentiment was echoed by many folks I spoke with. They've heard or seen repercussions faced by those who have voiced their concerns. One employee said to me, "I don't trust HR. Who can I go to? HR is supposed to ensure compliance with laws, hire and retain employees, prioritize the well-being of staff, yet our HR department seems to lack the trust and competence of our employees." I'm also puzzled by the board's decision to approve the addition of two new positions in the HR department. How does this restore the trust and faith in this organization? This seems to be a surface-level improvement. Maybe a pause should be considered before filling these positions and the rep energy and effort to a closer evaluation of its director and the department. I bring these questions to you, hoping to understand what actions we'll be taking to address, improve, and resolve the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time?
Have to read from my phone, sorry. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ashley Diaz, and I'm the parent of a seven-year-old son on the autism spectrum. He was attending the Maple Hill Annex Truman Moon, which is a special needs school within our district until recently. I'm here tonight to speak not only on behalf of my son, but for all the children with special needs who deserve better support and understanding in our schools. My son has struggled greatly this year due to a lack of proper support. His school does not have any trained registered behavior technicians, even though it's supposed to be a program designed for children with autism. Without that trained staff, my son's behavioral challenges have been handled through removal from the class instead of through support and skill building... Support and skill building. Every day, he has been in crisis, not because he cannot learn, but because the school does not have the tools or trained staff to help him succeed. This is heartbreaking, especially because my son was once considered a success story. In kindergarten, he made tremendous progress using his AAC device. He showed high growth on his MAPS scores and was recognized as an example of success in the 812 program at a previous board meeting. Now, due to the lack of proper support, he has regressed significantly. I've always been an advocate for my children, but time and time again, I've been let down by this district. One of my children were even released to a non-consodio parent in the past, which took police involvement to resolve, a trauma our family still carries. And now, again, another one of my children have been deeply impacted by systemic failures. My son has been threatened with disciplinary actions and removed from learning environments, even sent to the principal's office instead of being supported through behavioral strategies appropriate for his disability. He's been taken to the sensory room instead of allowed to participate in recess or social opportunities with his peers. I truly feel my son has been punished for behaviors that stem from his disability not helped to learn the skills he needs. But I have to ask, what research supports punishing a child with autism as an effective educational approach, because I have not seen any that does? It is deeply concerning that a program meant for children with autism and other special needs lacks the staff and structure to meet their... needs lacks the staff and structure to meet their basic needs. I know my son is not the only child struggling. Many students in the school are isolated with limited exposure to non-disabled peers and are not receiving the free and appropriate public education that they are entitled to under federal law. I am now forced to seek an out-of-district placement for my son to get him the help he should have been receiving here, but I'm speaking out tonight not only for him, but to urge this district to make changes so other families do not have to go through what we have. These children need properly trained staff, behavior supports, and opportunities for inclusion, not isolation and punishment. Please take a serious look at how these programs are being run, who is being hired, and whether our district is truly meeting the needs of its most vulnerable students. Our children deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Diaz. Ms. Diaz, if I could just ask you to sign in on the log. Oh, you did, okay, good, thank you. Would anyone else like to address the Board at this time? Nope, not missing anybody. Thank you, everybody, I know that's not easy to do. No letters received, right, Mrs. Monchery? Okay. Moving on to our superintendent updates. Acting Superintendent Adoma.
Good evening. So just wanted to give a couple of updates. Uh, the first, we are celebrating Red Ribbon Week this week, that's why we're, some of us are wearing red. So, Red Ribbon Week starts October 23rd through October 31st, and what we've done so much to pass, we've had our administrators across buildings get together to plan some activities across the district. Well, we, today, we, tomorrow, we'll have some high school scholars going to the kickoff event in Goshen. Our fifth graders will have a assembly that will be hosted by our ADAC Prevention Specialist Wanda Phibus, along with Officer Golly from Milltown PD. We're also having the Spirit Week, so today was Team Up Against Drugs, so Twin Day. There'll be a turn, your bat to drugs and alcohol backwards day. On Wednesday, Thursday, Put Drugs to Rest, Pajama Day. And then Friday, Red D, To Live Drug-Free, Wear Red and Midi Blue. Families will also receive a communication about just some upcoming events, given that it's fall. This Saturday, we'll have our, October 25th from nine to four, we'll have our Autumn Craft fundraiser in the Mill, Milltown High School gym. That's to benefit the athletic, athletic teams, so please come out and support. On Tuesday, October 28th, from 6:30 to 7:30 PM, we'll have the John Brigham Memorial Scholarship Night, and that's gonna be here in the Media Center, tickets are $5, and the proceeds go to support a scholarship for a Milltown High School scholar in the music department. We have our, the most request, prior, most popular event is our trunk or treat on October 29th, starts at 4:30 here at the high school in the Board of Education parking lot. And November 4th is a conference day, so there'll be no school for our scholars while we do professional learning, so just families will see that coming through on Friday via school messenger. And that's, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Connell to give some construction updates.
President Estrada, Vice President Romero, members of the school board, Acting Superintendent Adoma, Milltown Community. If you're driving anywhere past Weisner Avenue, I know that you can't help but look and realize that Twin Towers is not the same building. Significant changes and the construction project that's taking place is led by really, three real important people, Landon Orion, Triton Construction, and KGND. But we could talk about it here as much as we want, but let's hear it from the people themselves, the people who have brought the expertise, the community sensitivity, and really have, and, and the management skills to make this project launch and, and to give us the real progress is what's going on. So, welcome, our team, and thank you guys for being here.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you guys and the board members. As you can see, we have a rendering by the architectural firm. This is the progress that we're doing, and we're gonna show you the progress of the rendering that we have here. If we go to the next slide. Oh. Okay, sorry. As you can see, this is where we are with the state of the project. We have a store, four-story building that's going up based on the rendering that you've seen. We've made a lot of great progress. In the background, the foreground there, you see the new cafeteria and central prep area, that is still going up there as well. This is the back of the building, which is going to be the backside of the cafeteria and the fitness area, and you can see the shot from the field that we're using as a lay-down area currently, and the four-story building in the background there. This is a view of here, the intent of this is going to be a very large cafeteria area split in two, and we'll be having the trusses very similar to what you see in the library here, Media Center with the Epi Deck. That is a concrete floor that's been poured. We are making some good strides here. We're starting to put together the interior classrooms in the addition, and you can see two views here, one is the corridors, and then one is the view with looking out through the future window curtain wall that will be up there. And I'll show you a rendering of the classrooms, one of the classrooms for future lab, science rooms. Here, you see how we're connecting the two buildings together, this is a firewall, this is all masonry. The side that you're seeing is the addition, behind that is the existing building that we are connecting through doorways, walkways, and that firewall is there to protect the buildings and compartmentalize them. And you see the new steel with the fireproofing. To the right, the photograph on the right is the actual new elevator shaft that's going in, and that will be in the addition. We do have an additional elevator that's going into the central prep area, which is our Phase 1B that will be coming up. I'm going to let Josh, who's on my team, continue with the milestones and let you know what we've accomplished so far and what we have coming up for milestones that we're gonna, here, I'm gonna do this.
I'm Josh Rodriguez, nice to meet everybody, thank you for coming out, everybody, and so, over the summer, we were able to land nineteen of these HVAC units that give us the, uh, sorry. We landed over the, um, over the summer, we landed nineteen units. And, um, so that was a big milestone to complete, and we completed that, and it was great. And, um, ahead of those milestones, we had electrical milestones where we got the transformers and the generator, the fire alarm and the electrical panels up, which would give us the electric that we need to continue for the 1B and the, and the continuation of the rest of the build-out. Looking ahead, we have these upcoming milestones, which will be enclosing the building for the upcoming winter, and electrical connections from the new to the existing building. We also have the Epi Deck that Liz was talking about at the cafeteria and the fitness area, and we're also gonna be landing eleven more units to these areas. And we also have the phasing beginning at the summer of 2026 that'll lead us into the existing area. And that's about it.
Does anybody have any questions in regards to construction?
So, we'll, we'll go around the table, but the first thing I wanna, I checked with Dr. Connell just to make sure, but, um, for the community to hear on time and on budget right now. So, that continues a trend, thanks to you guys, as well as our business office and our B&amp;G crew of making sure that our projects are on time and on budget for our students. So with that being said, we'll start off with Mr. Moore. Any questions?
Before you begin, um, before you begin, can we get the rest of the members, these other guys standing up, get to know who they are and what their capacity is? Are they gonna?
Yeah, after the presentation, they'll go over our compliance that we've been working on.
I didn't mean to jump to go ahead.
So, you're good, okay. Mr. Prino.
You know, I want to compliment the, your whole team.
Thank you.
Last evening, we had a, a meeting of the Teaching and Learning Committee at, it was at the board office, and I asked Fred Merritt, one of our administrators, how is it coming? How much disruption is it causing? He said, "Very minimal disruption." Construction is never fun, I've been through a number of construction projects in this district, but it's amazing, the magnitude of this construction, the, and the balance would be relatively small amount of disruption. There's always disruption, but, uh, it's been held to a minimum, I believe.
I have to say that the Twin Towers staff, the administrative there, they've been wonderful to work with, the teachers, you know, good morning, to say good morning, any disruptions that we have, Josh and I go in there and talk to them, but it's been minimal, you know, they, they have a smell or a noise, we address it right away. Even the building, Bill Bartlett and his crew, everybody's been phenomenal to work with, and everybody's been so patient with everything that's going on outside. Even the students have been great.
Again, a, a good job. When do we expect some of the sections to be open? Is there a plan for that?
Yeah, there's a plan for that, and we are working, we have, of course, the addition that we're trying to strive to get that enclosed for the, for the wintertime, but we will have some renovated space in the beginning of the year to start to turn over some of the interior renovated space. Okay, we have some egress that we have to work through with that, so we'll keep everybody abreast of the timing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prino, Mr. Rat.
Now, just quickly, um, things coming on really well, and we appreciate you guys just giving us a blueprint of where you're at in the process.
Yep.
I just wanted to ask a question of, are we on schedule? Are we ahead of schedule? How are we feeling? Do we have a target date?
Well, I can't, I can't say we're ahead of schedule. We are progressing at a great, you know, a great pace. We have framing going in, mechanicals going in, we have multiple trades, you know, as you know, we have fourteen different prime contractors. And we are progressing in, in the path that we want to progress, there are some outlying factors that we don't have control over. In order for us to connect the new addition is, we have to do a power shutdown. That power shutdown is gonna take a week. So right now, we're trying to work through of getting that done by the end of the year, pulling all the cables before it gets too cold out, and then waiting on O and R, which is a factor that we can't predict. So if we can get O and R, we can get them on schedule, and hopefully, weather's not an issue, we're, we're really striving in that direction.
Awesome, thank you.
You got it.
If you don't mind, it's Walter KGND Architects, I'm, I'm just gonna jump in on Liz and Josh's behalf. This image that you see is like the key to their big master schedule. If you go in their trailer and job site, this is on the wall, and there's a bunch of dates associated with it. So, we are on schedule through the work we've completed so far, but to date, we've, we're working on the purple area in that image and the blue area in the upper right, so we have all that red and green to go, and that's the renovation of the existing building. And we know there's gonna be some hurdles there, we just don't know how big they're gonna be. So, knock on wood, it's going really well right now, but we still, still have a long ways to go.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Rat. Mr. Bison.
Would you just refresh for myself with the current building? Where are we with the air conditioning?
So, you saw those HVAC units, I think there were nineteen of them. Yep, we've, we've installed the geothermal wells in the field, remember that was done over a summer. So the air conditioning will come online within the existing building as we finish the renovation of those spaces. So, the sequence of operations will be construct the addition, construct, bless you, construct the addition, create some what we call swing space, so some space for folks to occupy while we work inside the existing building. So, the addition needs to open, and then once, once we do that, we can start renovating existing space, and then the air conditioning will come on incrementally throughout the existing building as those spaces are renovated.
Do you have any idea of time on that?
So, so the, as I said, the phasing that we're doing, the timeline for the one Phase A, that AC unit will be working, they'll have it about thirty percent, because we can't fire up the entire building until it gets going, but that phase will be online with the air conditioning, the new air conditioning. So when we're ready to move into that, there will be air conditioning.
I know I'm a little ahead of schedule, you know, we're not talking about, but I also know the, especially on that third floor.
It gets hot. It gets very, very hot, so.
Even during the winter?
I think, I'm sorry?
Even during the winter?
No, 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 the existing building during the winter is fine, but as, as you remember, we put new windows in, and now by code, they open about this much.
Right, so I guess, this is perfect timing, kind of, you know, you'd be able to take advantage of it. While you don't really need the AC at this.
Correct.
No, no, but I just wanted to, I'm hoping we have it for, for the spring.
So you will have that first phase, that first phase will have air conditioning, okay, when we're ready to turn that over, and then, as well as the cafeteria. And then, once we done that, we'll start the other phases, and then that air conditioning, because it's not installed, even though we have the units on the roof, we still have to do the ductwork, we still have to do electrical, although that plumbing gets connected, so that's why we're working our way around the whole building. So you will see that phase that we turn, each phase that we turn over will have air conditioning, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Bison. Mr. Lugo.
For the most part, I just want to say congratulations, it seems that you guys are up on schedule for the most part. I was actually at Twin Towers not too long ago, it was, I think, I believe, last Friday, and I was just, I was literally just admiring what you guys got going on, I just want to say.
So, next time you're there, let me know, well, Josh and I will walk you through and show you all the interior space that's going on.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
You missed the last tour that we had for the Board, but I have to.
Thank you, um, yeah, that would be great, considering I, I went to Twin Towers, and look, yeah, just looking at all the plans that you guys have is amazing, great.
Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Ms. Patel.
Um, I just want to say that what you guys have is really, really cool, and I do want to see it. So I do have a question, and this is mostly like a board question, but I just wanted to ask, is, when would, we're, will we be able to like go like to Twin Towers after they're done and be able to like see what they've done and like experience it? Like, yeah, like a tour?
We'll probably do a couple of tours before it even gets done, like progress tours throughout.
Okay, I just wanted to know, thank you.
We'll make sure we do another one this year, though, before you guys graduate.
We also, just so you know, we're building, the mechanical room is, is gonna be an education space, so it'll be set up so that the students in the building can come and view the mechanical room that's down there, so they can see all the electrical and all the HVAC systems that are built in, so.
You guys done some of that already.
Uh, that's really in great shape, a lot of that is in.
Said I'm not gonna be here.
So, we're, actually, all the equipment is in, we're just doing all of the controls to run the system, so. I'm sorry, you had another question?
I was just saying, it kinda makes me upset, I'm not gonna be a part of this district when I'm finished, but hey, it sounds great, sounds amazing.
You can come back when you come to visit during the summer, like I said, Josh and I are always out standing in the street with our hard hats on, just come over, we got extra hard hats and vests, we can.
I think you're gonna need an extra big hard hat for Mr. Lugo over there.
I got a lot of hair.
Okay, so's Josh.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys. Pastor Williams. The neighbor of Twin Towers.
I, I don't, I don't have any, I don't have any questions because I get to see the progress every time I look out my kitchen window. And so, um, uh, uh, this has been a long, this has been a long process, and, you know, this has been a couple of years now from when we started the whole, the whole process, but to even for it to get to this point, the last tour that we had really kind of brought things full circle, to see, to see the progress and to see what's gonna, so even as I'm watching the steel go up, you know, that excites me, I, I look out, I look out my, look out my kitchen window and I, I'm seeing, you know, I'm seeing steel go up from week to week, so I've only got one request, I, I don't, I don't come over and bother you guys at all, drop off, drop a hard hat off for me at my, on my front porch.
Absolutely.
And I'll make sure there's plenty of extra coffee and hot chocolate on the front porch too for you guys, when you, when you, when you run out of coffee in the office, just take two steps over and I'll put some extra coffee out for you.
You got it, absolutely.
Thank you, Pastor Williams.
And, and yeah, since John said it, yeah, I'll go, I'll go down to Daddy's Donuts and we'll get some donuts.
Mr. Freddie Williams.
Yeah, um, no questions, just a comment. Being a lifelong resident of Milltown, um, you know, it's really nice to see that building come back alive. Just the structure of the building was awesome, people always talk about. People always talk about, you know, the castle look of it and, and things of that sort. And just to see the additions, the way it's coming together is really nice. So I just want to, you know, commend you guys on all your time and energy and effort. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the only comment, piggybacking a little bit on Mr. Freddie Williams, that I have to say, I think that when this project is done, you guys should submit it for an award. Because taking a building that was built in 1940, that building is now 85 years old, and transforming it into a state-of-the-art educational building, that we were told, when this Board of Education, at least a decade ago, was told, what are we going to do with Twin Towers? The options were close it and build somewhere else, refurbish this one. But I think one of the telling things I remember from that time was when we were told that if you guys spend the money that you need to spend on this building, it will last you another 80 years. That's how strong this building is. That was the determining factor, I think, for the board at that time, that it would be money well spent. So I, I think you guys, at the end of this progress, should submit this in for an award because I think this building is going to look outstanding afterwards.
We'll be very excited to do that when it's done. And we welcome the opportunity to submit it. This project, if the high school was submitted, it won a New York State Award. I think Twin Towers will exceed that.
Cool, very good. And you had some additional items you wanted to present?
Yes.
Before you go there, I want to say thank you.
I'm so sorry.
For everything that you're doing.
Oh, my gosh.
And great updates, thank you.
Vice President Romero, it's all you.
Thank you.
So I don't want to steal any thunder from Lloyd and Wendell. But Lloyd and Wendell are here from Landon and Ryan. And you may remember, when we started this project, there were some very important initiatives that the district wanted to take on relative to community engagement, economic engagement within the region. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lloyd and Wendell and let them give you an update as to the impact of this project.
It's always hard coming after Walt, he's so tall. Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me. I would feel blessed to be a part of this project. Seems like it was about three or four years ago when we had the conversation. And to see it at this point is definitely great. And Wendell and I are, feel blessed to be, have been a part of it. The numbers that I'm going to present today are going to be as of July 2025. I'm a little too loud. So if you look at the spreadsheet, the chart on the screen, the total construction contract value that we did the monitoring for was about 80 million. And of that, we have an MBE, which is minority business enterprise, WBE, which is women business. And our main focus was on the local utilization, which you'll see in the green section, was very successful on this project. So of the combined Phase One and Phase Two, you'll notice that the MBE had about a $1.3 million total payout to date. Now, again, this is just paid out to date. This project is still going. This number is going to continue to grow. But if you look at the WBE, we had about seven, excuse me, 1.6 million has been paid out to the women-owned firms. But the prize here is the local business participation. When we started the project, we wanted to focus not to come from firms out of New Jersey, New York. We wanted it to be here. So that was our main focus. You could see, that's where most of the spend came from, that 14 million. So that when you look at the goals, we had a 9% MBE and a 6% WBE and a 5%. Collectively, as of July, the goals were 20%, but they were exceeded. So at 21.5%. And again, the project's going to continue. This number is just going to go up from here. Project's doing very well on the local side. Another great point is the workforce. If you look at the two, we calculated about 63,000 hours of that. 18,476 were minority hours. Women were about 3,670. So that had a goal set of 20% minority and 10% women. Collectively, as you could see, the minority was crushed at 29%, 5.8% on the women. In totality, the goal was 30%, but as of July, we were at 34.9%. And that usually goes up when you get into the, the building closing up with the finishes and a lot of the local contractors. So the project's doing extremely well. Again, we were blessed to be a part of it, and we just hope that it continues.
Awesome.
We also thank you, we are a minority-owned firm ourselves. We do thank you for this. We're passionate about it. We just about five, six schools. So I've seen some school districts that didn't have any numbers. So what the impact is, is a lot of companies coming into your community and they're actually leaving your community where there's no workforce participation in. And able, you doing this is capturing and make sure the people that are in your community and also the kids, that parents actually get to work. And we have also seen kids that graduated actually be on your program. So this is not, you know, not always usual. But some of the school district kind of regret that they didn't capture some of those dollars so they can stay within the community. So, but you guys feed me, thank you.
So what's the name of your firm and where you guys located?
Landon and Ryan.
Yeah, yep, yep. It's Landon and Ryan Enterprises, it's Landon and my son.
I know because I see it, but that way the people out there.
Ryan is my daughter. It used to be Landon in New York, but we made it equal opportunities. So we changed the name of the company, Landon and Ryan Enterprises. She'd probably take the company faster than him.
Were you located out of?
We have an office, the main headquarters in Rochester, New York. We have an office in Syracuse and have office in, in the capital district, Albany, New York.
We'll have to talk to Steve Newhouse, have you bring an office down to Orange County?
Okay, yeah, definitely.
So let me, let me jump in real quick.
Curtis had a quick, he had his answer.
Just a quick question, and you don't have to go too far into it. I was just curious of what that process looks like when you hire minorities and, you know, recruit them for this type of project.
Sure.
I mean, what does that look like?
Yeah, I can give you the quick, so during the, at the beginning of the project, when it's being bid out, we tell all of the contractors that are prime contractors that there's a goal on the project. So your responsibility is to meet these goals. So we help them as much as we can. There's a New York State database that we ask them to pull from. But we actually did something a little special on this. We gave them, I think it was a 50-mile radius, so they're able to pull from local firms instead of just the firms on the site. And it helped the smaller firms build capacity because historically, the smaller firms, you need that one shot. And then they start out with one room, and then before you know it, they have two. And then they end up doing a building, and you build capacity. So this is, this is really a help, the team helped and administration helped us to help the people to decide what firms to utilize. You know, they're vetted and everything else, but it just was, it was a good process. And then Syracuse, we did it as well. The superintendent wanted local certification as well. So it's great to keep the money in the community.
Pastor Williams?
Thank you.
Yeah, we did a minority business outreach event. We bring all the minority-owned firms and the women-owned firms and architecture, everybody. And we do a presentation and we introduce the firms to the prime contractors, encourage them to partner. And hopefully, this is going to go further because a lot of times, they don't understand they, when they get a chance to meet the MWB firm, they like working with them. So after this project, they may take them on another project.
Wow, that's great.
Because of the quality of the work.
Thank you.
Pastor Williams?
And suppliers also.
You know, so, you know, just to talk about the process, talk about the process, you know, I had the privilege, I had the privilege of being the president when this project was, was started and along with Mr. Prino. Mr. Prino, there was a committee that was set up of all the stakeholders, teachers, administrators, community members, that in the beginning of this project, that talked about what were we looking for from this project? What were the needs? The teachers that were in that building, the administrators that were in that building, even opportunities to talk with students at that time. And, and so, one of the big things that we were really, you know, set on was making sure that bringing the scope of this work into, into this community and making sure that this community had some, there was some real economic impact for this community. And, and that's why, that's why we contracted with Landon and Ryan, because they're the experts in knowing how to bring those things into fruition. And, and so you'll find, there's even other things, there's even, you know, jobs, businesses, things like that. It's impacting our community, our community. So we're not doing, we're not like a, you know, we're not like some other projects where they're, where they're bringing in a whole lot of people from outside. But they're making sure that they sit down. There's been numerous meetings over the years. And I know we got some new board members that weren't here during the beginning of that process. But I want to encourage you, take some time to go and, and looked up Landon and Ryan and have some conversation. All of these individuals that are standing here are amazing individuals. We've been doing business with, we've been doing business with K and D for, KG and D for, for a long time. And, and they are, they are stellar. And Liz is amazing and Josh is amazing. They're all, they're all amazing individuals. Take some time to get to, to talk to them and ask your questions. I'm sure that they'll be able to bring you up to date on everything that's going on and where it's going as well, so.
Thank you, Pastor. Anybody else? Mr. Prino?
Piggyback on what Bishop Williams said, when the whole project started, we insisted on minority participation in this project. And I must say, Mrs. Creed and Superintendent Creed and led the, led the charge on this, if you remember, Bishop. And we, as a whole, as a board as a whole, we said, look, if it's going to go forward, one of the criterias be that we hire locally and we, we're sure to hire, we'd be sure to hire minorities and create a sense of equity in the project. So nice job to the, to our firm who we, who we hired, doing, doing great work on, on this. So thank you, and we look forward to seeing it when it's all completed.
Anything, Mr. Moore?
I'm going to say, I have a quick comment because I actually do recall when you first came here and presented. So to see facts after a couple of years of what the work has been implemented as far as the, the collaboration and, you know, the drive to make sure that the, you know, the local and minority businesses are giving a shot at the project is, is great to see. So it's good to see the numbers reflecting what you guys spoke about in the beginning. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Bison, anything? Mr. Lugo, anything? Ms. Patel?
Vice President Romero?
Thank you.
Awesome. Just a quick question, are you guys going to be at?
Have one more statement.
Sure.
We actually have two Middletown graduates working on a project. They came, graduated through Middletown, and they went through the Electrical Apprentice Program. And they were actually onsite working every day with us.
That is awesome.
Yes, they went through the BOSI's program, so.
That's awesome.
And they, they were at the top of their class, and now they're on this project, so.
And I think during our, our last building tour, you mentioned that, that you like, and that's one of the reasons why you try to encourage the students to go see the mechanical room.
Absolutely.
And stuff, so they can connect with it, so. Awesome. Are you guys going to be at the NISBA conference this week? All right. We'll stop by and say hi. I think you should put up pictures of Middletown up there, just saying, just, just saying.
Just saying.
KG and D always has.
No pressure.
They always have stuff up. I've got some other districts, because I'm the Area 9 Director, I've got some other districts that have been inquiring right now about, about who we use. And so I'm, I'm bringing them to the table, I'm going to bring people to the table.
Mr. Prino just mentioned about the onset of this and, you know, the vision to implement this program. And I remember a lot of debate internally within the team, you know, I do a lot of construction projects, I think I know what's going on. And Lloyd mentioned the goals, and we set these goals. And Lloyd and Wendell, they look like nice guys right here, right? They're smiling, very agreeable. They were not agreeable. They were very, they had very determined about the goals for this district. And they set the bar very high, and they beat it. They exceeded it. So very proud about that, and these guys did a great job.
Awesome, thank you, guys. Appreciate it, thank you very much. We'll move on on our agenda and head on over to our student board member reports, the highlight of the night. Who's leading off tonight? Ms. Patel?
Good evening, everyone. I just want to go back to what Acting Superintendent Ms. Odoma said about this week is Red Ribbon Week. And basically, it is technically Drug Awareness Week. Me and Eden had the opportunity and the honor to be a part of it and help bring awareness to students to be drug-free. So we had a table set up near the old cafe where we would welcome students and tell them to sign a pledge to show that they are drug-free. And with that paper that they signed, we hanged it up right on the wall near the old cafe. And that wall, let me tell you, is filled up with signatures, and that's what we really want to see, so.
Awesome.
Yeah. And additionally, I just wanted to talk about homecoming. So I was helping the student council with homecoming and, like, with the ticket process. And we had, like, literally 500 people, and that is a max for homecoming. So that was very good. And I just also wanted to appreciate the NHS volunteers who helped set up for prom, for the decorations, and just helping out with, and with the staff in general. I really appreciate it because it looked really nice. Last but not least, I just wanted to say, and I said this last board meeting, but me and Eden both are working towards being a familiar face with the school district because I always go by, if somebody sees your face more than once a day, they're more willing to talk to you because you are a familiar face within this school. So I'm always trying, me and Eden are always trying to, like, put ourselves out there. So for students to be able to talk to us and reach us at any time. Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, Ms. Patel, Mr. Lugo.
Yes, last time we were here, we were on our way into our homecoming game against Pine Bush, which luckily for us, we've won, we, we acclaimed their victory. Then the following Saturday, Napur and I were at homecoming. Like, like she said, it looked really nice. I commend everybody in NHS that stood, that took time and dedicated their own personal time to set up and help us. And now we're going through Red Ribbon Week. Today was Twin Day. And this whole week, we're just going to be outside of the cafeteria, right by the big glass window with a table, just encouraging people to sign a pledge to, to spread their, to spread their Middy pride in being drug-free. And to show that us Middies are, are. Yeah, we're drug-free, we're, yeah, we're aware of the cause, we're here, we're here, like, promoting the necessities of what it means to be drug-free. Yeah, it's just been great this past, since we last spoke. I haven't had really much to say. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Oh, oh, oh. Sorry, sorry. Friday, I was at Twin Towers with a few of, a few selected students. I believe it was seven of us total. We went to speak to Twin Towers sixth graders just to give them, it was just a student panel for us to just talk to them and give them guidance for their next years. And it was, it was great. I wish I had photos and videos and recollection from it. I think it's posted up on Facebook, like, some pictures and stuff. But let me tell you something, being there, talking to these sixth graders was surreal. Sitting there and like, in the back of my head, thinking I used to be just like these kids right here, like, and. Yeah, I, I try. Nah, but yeah, I even had a little section where I stood up and I talked directly to a young boy, I forgot his name. But he asked me a really, a really important question, and it was, what made me, because, because I spoke about how in Twin Towers, I used to get into trouble. And he asked me, what made me change and what, what motivates me to continue to change? And I feel like that really stuck with me because I haven't thought about something like that since I've been, like, with, have all, have had all this change. And it was just like, it was just great. This, this year's been going great so far. And it was just like, it was just great. This, this year's been going great so far. But, yeah, thank you.
The sunny side's always better than the dark side, remember that. So, we'll move on to our community engagement updates and we'll start off with Pastor Williams this time on this side. You good? You ready for your conference, your big conference? You ready for the big conference coming up?
I was gonna, I was gonna say, that for community or committee reports, but.
It's up to you, whichever.
Yeah, I'll, I'll wait, I'll wait till committee reports.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, great. So, thank you. I'm gonna start this off with the, there's a kickoff event taking place, the Red Ribbon, as everyone has mentioned. Red Ribbon Kickoff Ceremony is a countywide Red Ribbon Kickoff. Some of our kids from Monhegan will be participating and traveling to Goshen High School to participate in the kickoff event. Then it will lead to our PTO. Just want to keep reminding the public that the dates for the Town Hall PTO are on the screen. Please take a screenshot and save it and definitely looking forward to a continued participation from the community attending the PTO. Lastly, this, I believe it was yesterday, attended, get the screen, there's some photos I've taken, collage to put together. The seniors, we have tremendous amount of seniors on the girls soccer team and all the parents and supporters have came out to support them. They end up in a tie, a double overtime tie versus Port Jervis. Definitely was a good time last night to be able to witness that in the cold, but it was good. But definitely what the highlight was seeing all the parents and the supporters and, and their friends celebrating them on senior night. We have a definitely a talented group and definitely will love to see what the future holds for the girls soccer team. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Prino?
Thank you, President Estrada. Nicole Tagney, she was not in attendance tonight. Should she have a letter of counsel? The answer is no. Because Nicole Tagney has arranged and organized a series of special service caregiver training. And that's where she was tonight at Presidential Park. There's the first series is knowing your rights and preparing for CSE meetings. So, congratulations to Nicole. I'll talk about, I'll talk about the variety of programs at a later meeting, but I just want to make that known. I think Nicole Tagney and her staff do an excellent job with that special service, the special ed program at Twin and the kids are really making progress. And I'll, I'll discuss that at another time and I have evidence as I read the reports each week that Mrs. Monchere keeps me going on that. So, now to Presidential Park. They're doing some neat things in Presidential Park. Can you put that up, the Star Leader Awards? The Star Leader Awards at Presidential Park, there are some of the bracelets that are given. This is a, a program that reminds me of the program at the high school, the Breakfast of Champions. One student from each classroom is nominated for the award and then they're celebrated at a student awards assembly. The students not only have those bracelets, but there's Deanna Lester, the principal, giving them ice cream treats. So, there's a criteria, there's a number of criteria for this award. They have to demonstrate a strong work ethic, self-discipline. They have to encourage a atmosphere free from violence, intimidation, bullying and harassing. They have to act during the school day with kindness and empathy. And when they're in the building, they have to, they have to be role models, have to be respectful, courteous and polite. So, nice job. And in addition to that, the Star Leader Program, Presidential Park invited the members of the Middletown Fire Department to the school. There's Truck Three, the Monhegan Truck, that's Truck Three, the Midi Bear is there. And the students had a very, they had an excellent time. Any more shots? There you go. Another fire engine. Kids love fire engine. There's a Monhegan Truck and the, the traditional Monhegan Truck, the traditional color of the Monhegan Truck. There's again the Truck Three, the McCoy's. And it was a very, very nice day. There's different Midi Bears for the occasion. That's the elementary Midi Bear. So, nice job to the people at Presidential Park. This coming Thursday, they're going to have a Red Ribbon Assembly. I got a note from Delilah Quintonis, one of the administrators at the building. So, that should be another excellent program. Thank you. I'm done. My time's almost over.
You sure? You still had a minute twenty left?
We had time before.
Okay. That's it. I can go on, but we'll cover it next time.
Okay, Mr. Prino. Mr. Rat?
Okay, good evening. I just wanted to continue to share on Hispanic History Month. Have a couple of things that need to come up on the screen. If they don't, it's okay. But again, with, at the Mulberry House, the Senior Citizen Center, we had some great activities there with the seniors and everything and having a good time. Very festive, very cultural. There's my daughter. I don't know if it came up, but I know my, my wife also sung a song there as well. If we don't get it, we'll catch it the next time. Yep, that's about all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rat. Mr. Bison?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bison. Mr. Lugo? Any community stuff you'd like to report on?
I mean.
You don't have to. It's up to you.
You don't have to. We're not forcing you, no.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, other than just going around talking to the, just like the kids throughout the building, just like connecting with them, making them, making myself known and like letting them know, like, I'm some, like, I'm a safe person to come to if you have a problem. Like, it doesn't matter what your problem is, even if it's like something at home, you could just come to me and talk. Like, I'm, I'm one of those people, I just sit there and I just listen. Like, you could, you could sit, talk for these four minutes exactly and I'll just, all ears. But yeah, that's as much I've just been just acting, seeing how everybody feeling, collecting my own type of information on student health and morale.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Lugo. Ms. Patel?
I just wanted to go back to what Eden said, just like being like a helping hand to all, like, students in our district. We just want them to be familiar, like, that we're here for them and that we're always here for them. And whenever they want to talk, we're gonna be available for them whenever we do have the time, anytime. I also just wanted to say that there is a chunker treat for NHS. It's gonna be maybe a week from now and it will be located near the Board Event as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Patel. Vice President Romero?
Mr. Lugo, I got you with pictures from Twin Towers. So, Twin Towers' sixth graders got to hear from a panel of Middletown High School students. Here are some of the pictures, including our very own student board member Eden. Hey! Good. And I heard you represented us very well, too. So, thank you. Yeah, that's all I got today. Thank you.
So, one of the things I did want to remind folks is how real world stuff affects even a high school. So, unfortunately, we had our Naval NJROTC Annual Inspection canceled because of the shutdown, the government shutdown. People don't sometimes understand the impact it has on your local communities and in this case, a great program. So, hopefully that'll be rescheduled once the government opens back up. Thank you to Building Principal Mrs. Jensen for sending me some information in regards to Carter. They started last week their Leader in Me Launch Rally and they were highlighted on Facebook, on the school district's website with a Midi Minute showing some of the programs that they had over there, including the, what looked to be the Marching Middies were there presenting to students. They also started hosting their Classroom Show and Shine, Family Visitation Events as part of the building's goal within their legacy plan. And that included the fourth graders presenting to their parents their insect projects. How would you have liked that? That would have been fun? Maybe we'll have them bring a couple of those insect projects here during the meeting. But according to Mrs. Jensen, the turnout over at Carter was amazing. So, we looked for some more stuff coming out of the future out of Carter Elementary as well. So, thank you for, from Mrs. Jensen. The football program, the Midi Bears all of a sudden have won a couple of games in a row. The Midi Bears have qualified for the football, Section 9 Football Playoffs. They play this Friday, they play their last two games of the regular season at home, including on Friday. The game on Friday against Our Lady of Lords will be preceded by a dedication for the Dick Woolslayer plaque that has now been installed opposite of the Ed Fowler, Fowler plaque on one of the columns to Woolslayer Gate. So, the Woolslayer family has been invited. They will be attending. Unfortunately, many of the board members will be down in New York City on Friday for the upcoming NISBA Convention. But, you know, if you get a chance to get down there early and you're listening, please give a shout out to the Woolslayer family for all that coach did for our particular community. And it's a beautiful plaque. I look forward to board members as they head down to the stadium in a future event to take a look at that as well. Great numbers from homecoming that you guys just gave as well. And then my final thing is, folks out there, if you can say a couple of prayers for our brethren down in the Caribbean. They are expecting some major, major issues, especially in Haiti and República Dominicana. Probably feet of rain coming over the next few days starting this weekend. So, please say a couple of extra prayers for areas of the world that really can't handle a lot of natural disasters. So, that includes Haiti, the Dominican Republic, Jamaica, Cuba and Grand Cayman as well. So, please say a couple of prayers for our brethren down there as well. And that's all I have for a community update. So, we'll move on to our committee reports and given that NISBA's coming up quick, I'll hand it over to Pastor Williams for the report on the NISBA Convention.
Um, just real quick, before I do that, I did, I, as I'm sitting here and thinking, I also want to make sure that we recognize that this is also Breast Cancer Awareness Month as well as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And as you speak about the Caribbean, Caribbean is my diocese. So, that's my diocese that I, that I, I work in. The Eastern Caribbean Council of Nations for the Pentecostal Assemblies of the World. And so, yeah, so we're preparing, we're preparing for that storm. So, yeah, it's apropos to remember that there's real life going on out there. The NISBA, the NISBA Annual, let me start with the NISBA Annual Business Meeting, which was held on the sixteenth. For those of you that received my newsletter, my Area 9 Newsletter, which was sent out, I believe it was yesterday, you'll see all of this information there. But nearly 350 delegates participated in the 2025 Annual Business Meeting, considering 37 proposed resolutions that were submitted by the July submission deadline. Twenty-three were recommended by the Resolutions Committee and 14 not recommended. By the end of the evening, delegates adopted 24 positions. You'll be able to go onto the NISBA website and click to see exactly everything that was adopted. The delegates also elected officers for the 2026 calendar year. Christine Schnarrs from Area 3 will, will be stepping in as the president. Rodney George from Area 2 as the first vice president. Brian, Brian Latoret from Area 8, which is just north of Area 9, as the second vice president. And Thomas Nespeck, Nespeck as the treasurer. So, congratulations to that. The, the convention starts on, on Thursday, actually starts on Thursday. So, it'll be the twentieth through the twenty-fifth. It's gonna be held at the New York Hilton Midtown. It's the Annual NISBA Convention and Education Expo. So, go. There's gonna be, it's gonna be a great experience. There's also the digital experience, which some of you will be participating in, that won't be able to go to the convention. So, but I think that you'll have a good time. They're going to try to do everything they can to record as many of the presentations as possible so that you'll be able to go back and watch them. That's one of the things that was, when it came to the digital experience, the conversation that we had was about making sure that we amp up the amount and the number of the digital experiences so that more people can participate in that. Lastly, lastly, I know that at the beginning of the year, at the beginning of the year in our reorg meeting, we, we approved to be able to join different groups. I, I want to request, request tonight, tonight, as we're getting set to go to the, to the convention, that we, we, it's now time to go ahead and rejoin up with the Black Caucus of School Board Members. Traditionally, we have joined up, not individually, but we've joined up as a, as a, as a district. The, the caucus is, is under, under new leadership, but they also hold a position on the NISBA Board. So, it's, it's great support. It's good to, to connect with, good to connect with those from other districts and be able to collaborate and talk and encourage each other in our shared experiences in this work of education. That's all I have to say. I'll, I'll see you all down there.
Can I get a quick, who's going down Wednesday night? Or is everybody? Your Wednesday, Andrew, your Wednesday also? Your Wednesday and Freddie and your Wednesday?
Freddie's not gonna make it. I'm going very late Wednesday.
You're going late Wednesday? All right. I'm gonna go down Thursday very, very early morning. Mr. Prino, you're doing virtual, I think, correct? Yep. And Camille's gonna do some of the sessions as well on there. So, everybody did sign up for the Oxba dinners Thursday and Friday?
And there's gonna be other dinners too. Yeah, I hope you all signed up for Oxba.
So, we're all signed up for that and everybody knows that we have a lunch, that's Friday? Yeah, Friday afternoon, we have the Small City. Yeah.
Turning your mic.
The Small City Lunch Event will be at the Cornell Club. That's from, that's Friday.
Friday.
Eleven forty-five to one, so you're done.
Yeah.
And you have a dinner, Oxba Dinner, that same night, four forty-five.
So, something that we learned last year for the Small City one lunch is that we may have to, if we're in a seminar before that, I would suggest leaving that seminar earlier and walk, because you have to walk to the Cornell Club. And last year when we got there, it was packed. There was very, unless they've changed the room, which it doesn't sound like they have.
It's not changed. The same room.
It's a very small room with not a lot of seating, so we need to get there, we'll get together as a group and we'll walk over early enough. But it's a great, it's, it's a perfect lunch for us because of the fact that we're dealing with school districts who are like Middletown at that Small City one. So, just be aware of that, that we'll coordinate. Also, I'll start to put together like a text chat group of the group that's gonna be in the city so we can, if for some reason in all the chaos, we don't get to talk to each other, we'll know which seminars we can pick so we're not duplicating seminars. And that way, we can give reports back to the board in subsequent meetings, do that. So, that way, we're not showing up with seven board members to one seminar and then none of the other ones are, are covered.
Uh, Mr. Estrada, because I know there's been other workshops that our board members have gone to. And past practices was always that there would be a report written and discussed at a board meeting. And I hope they go back to that for those of us who are unable to be present.
And we'll do that. I think one of the, some of the summer ones that we went to with leadership, other business matters kind of got in the way. We weren't able to do some of the committee reports that we historically have done in the past.
I think we just got away from it even last year, too.
But yeah, that, that's a good idea. And because of the fact that, you know, we had, everybody's gonna be attending either virtually or in person, maybe what we'll do is we'll break it up with a couple of board members, like, three board members will do it one meeting and then the next three will do it the following meeting on the seminars. So, that way it's spread out since we're not, we don't want to be here till, you know, 10 o'clock talking about the NISBA Convention, so.
Also, I think, I think you, you'll be able to download, download the app so that you'll be able to get all of your. be able to get all of your, the list of everything, of all of the offerings, as well as the floor, floor plan layout for the expo floors. You'll know where everything is at. If so, if you, when you get down there, you'll be able to download the app onto your phone, and they'll get you the login information, so that when you, when you get registered in. So, all right.
Thank you. And I just, and thank you, Mrs. Montari, for reminding me. So the award for the New York State School Board Member of the Year, which is our own, Mr. Perino.
Right.
I mean, people, you know, it's sometimes hard when people don't understand the concept of, of the board conventions and everything, how much of a prestigious award this really is. There literally will be, you know, over a thousand people in this ballroom, and their attentions will be on Mr. Perino at eight thirty in the morning on Friday morning. So it's important for us to be there. My guess is that on that morning, all of us as Middletown delegates will sit together along with our brethren from around Orange County to watch it. You know, Mr. Perino unfortunately can't be there in person.
Yes.
But he has a little surprise for us that we'll see when we get down to New York City. So God bless you. Congratulations again, Mr. Perino.
Yep.
Thank you, Mrs. Montari. So we'll go around, other committee reports, anything on audit, Mr. Byasson?
No, our next meeting isn't until January, but we're keeping Dr. Cornell right on his post.
Facilities, Mr. Perino?
No, just keeping up with spring and change orders.
Policy, Mr. Rett?
Nothing at this time. We're going to be sitting down and coming up with a date.
Microphone, microphone.
Nothing at this point. We're going to be sitting down, coming up with a date for our next meeting. We had a Teach and Learn Committee meeting yesterday, and that went very well. We had the literacy and staff people that are part of Mr. Adoma's team, and they presented, you know, on all grade levels, elementary, middle school, as well as high school, what the pilots, the pilots that they have been working on as it pertains to the literacy program, as well as the math program, the textbooks. It was very extensive and it was very productive. And so I guess at some point, maybe they'll share some of that stuff with, that's right, I'm sorry, Rose was there, as well as my colleague here, John, so, you know.
That was, may I?
Yeah, please.
That was some meeting. I sent an email last night to Acting Superintendent Camille there. The program that, the ELA program that we've adopted now, it was on a trial last year. I looked at the workbook that those, our students are using. Phenomenal, phenomenal. The math, I flunked. That was very difficult. When I looked at seventh grade math, it's the math I took in high school. But the ELA, the, it's just phenomenal. I asked about it for middle school, just to see if we could have a continuum there. And you know, it's something that perhaps we will need to invest in. I don't, I'm not prophesizing. I'm not sure we'll see ELA results this year, but I guarantee, in two years, you're going to see some ELA results on the state test. I'm putting my neck on the line, but, but it was a phenomenal meeting. It was one of the best meetings.
Let's put it this way, it will not be for a lack of effort, that's for sure.
Oh, it's, right. No, I can't say enough about it. I'm still talking about it and thinking about it. Mr. Perino wasn't happy with me, but he, you know, yelled at me for being so over enthusiastic.
Yeah.
But wasn't that the book...
All good, Mr. Rett? You're all good?
No, I just want to also take the time to, I sent an email to Mrs. Adoma as well. Over the past few years, I've been on this committee, and, I mean, on this board, and, you know, her attention to detail as it pertains to curriculum instruction and the team that she's assembled, you know, our kids are in good shape. As Rose was saying, there's, you know, the program that's rolled out, literacy as well as math, you know, it's very student friendly as well, and so, yeah.
Awesome. Mr. Perino, you wanted to add something?
Just piggyback on what Rose and Kurt said on that committee. Some of our finest instructors were there, Tiffany Hall, Fred Merritt, Terry McCarron, and Robin Poole. And I want to, you, you mentioned the math and the ELA. I want to just mention the program that Robin Poole has instituted at the high school. A cooperative program is sort of in its organization stages, and even more so with Orange County Community College, SUNY at Orange. And what is going to happen eventually, hopefully, is that our high school students can earn before they graduate from high school, an associate degree from SUNY Orange. A number of our instructors have interviewed, and there's a rigorous interview process to become an instructor at SUNY Orange, and Robin Poole pointed this out. One of the, one of the elements of this is that the courses are also pretty tough. But that's what it takes to get an associate degree, so, from SUNY Orange. So I think this has great possibilities, and I want to encourage, encourage the high school and Camille to keep on this, and I'm sure you will. And you did a nice job, by the way, as Kurt Rett mentioned, Mrs. Adamo, at the, at that meeting, organizing it. So it was a very productive meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Perino. Anything on diversity? I know Dr. DeJesus is not here today, but Ms. Crawford?
We have our first meeting November thirteenth. The invitations have gone out. It's at five thirty at the Board of Ed office. It's our first meet and greet, and then we will review the plan for the remainder of the year and get some ideas going and recruitment ideas.
Great. Thank you. District safety, Mr. Perino, you have anything from there? I know the chair is Mr. Zack.
At the homecoming game, can't say enough about, good things about our security staff there. They, they always do a fine job. And I stand up, or I stood up near the entrance and looked at the, the process of getting individuals into the stadium, spectators and so on. It, it's running very well, much better than last year. And that goes, because of the two new systems, the two new security systems. And that goes also for students gaining access to the high school. I think you could agree, it's a, it's improvement. Are things perfect? No. Not 100% perfect, but it's really come a long way. So that's, that's my report. We'll be having a full meeting soon. And if anyone wants to join the Safety and Security Committee and the Facilities Committee, please, please let myself or Mrs. Montari know, and we'll take care of that. Thank you.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Perino. I think that's important to know about the stadium security, too, because we do have, starting probably the end of next week and all the way through the beginning of December, all of the Section Nine Championships for soccer, the state soccer championships and the football championships are coming up as well. So there'll be a lot of folks headed down to the stadium this winter. Some of our, for BOSI's, that's, myself is the board liaison. Just want to, you know, the superintendent over at BOSI's, Mrs. Hepus, wanted me to remind us that she's been helping out our business office when needed, and we thank them for whatever help that they can provide. City of Middletown, Mr. Byasson, anything, or Pastor Williams?
No, the meeting was tonight, sir.
Oh, okay. How about Town of Walkill, Mr. Perino, anything?
No, nothing, just...
It's election time, so, you know, they're busy.
The supervisor every once in a while.
No, I got a phone call from a council member to remind me that there was this, and I said, "Sorry, Board of Ed, no."
And I missed the last OXPa meeting. I went to the beginning of it, and that was counselors. Yeah, yeah. One of our, our own counselor from Twin Towers was there. It was an awesome presentation, but I think Dr. DeJesus gave us an update at the last meeting, so. And that's all we've got, I think. Anything with MBK, Mr. Rett, that you're aware of?
Well, I'm sorry.
Anything with MBK that you're aware of coming up? Or Mr. Lugo, if you have anything?
I'm not...
Nope, nothing with MBK?
Yeah, not, yeah, not this time.
Quiet for now?
Yeah, we're quiet for now.
All right, cool. For now. So again, the Board of Education will be leaving, starting tomorrow, for the New York State School Boards Association Conference that'll last until Saturday. We are very well represented. I commend all of my brethren for taking time out of their busy schedules to go down and, and learn about what's going on around the state. National Hispanic College Fair is Thursday, this Thursday, October 23rd, here at the high school. We have Latino Heritage Celebration Assembly at Monhegan Middle School on Friday, October 24th. Twin Towers Movie Night, Friday, October 24th at four o'clock. They're showing Tim Burton's Corpse Bride. The Autumn Craft Fair fundraiser is on Saturday from nine to four at the high school gym. The John Brigham Memorial Scholarship Night is Tuesday, October 28th at six thirty at the, right here at the media center. The District Fall Festival Trunk Retreat will be on Wednesday, October 29th. That's between the board office near the softball field and the high school from four thirty to six. College and Career Parent Night is coming up a week from tomorrow, October 29th at six o'clock at the high school. The MHS Panel, that was at Twin Towers, that you saw our own Mr. Lugo take part in, will now move on to Monhegan next Thursday, October 30th. The Latino Heritage Celebration Assembly for Twin Towers will be on Friday, October 31st on Halloween. Countywide Superintendent Conference Day will be Tuesday, November 4th. There will be no school for students on that day. So once again, Tuesday, November 4th, no school for students. That's the Superintendent Conference Day. And then we have Family Game Night on Wednesday, November 5th. That's at all of the elementary schools. So busy, busy, busy over the next two weeks. Our next school board meeting, remember, has been changed from Thursday, November 6th to Wednesday, November 5th. Five fifteen for early exec, six thirty public participation. At this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Byasson, seconded by Mr. Rett. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Everybody have a blessed evening.